Gentlemen, for those of you that weren't here for the board meeting, or I think maybe, or the traffic commission meeting, we are using the Zoom recording to create the minutes. Judy won't be able to be with us. So if you can, please be sure to use your microphone tonight. It would be very helpful.
Everybody ready? I'd like to call the East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply. And the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman for people utilizing Zoom. You will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and your address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, we ask that you unmute your microphone. After speaking, please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township Public Comments Rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes. It must be about the agenda item being discussed with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of any non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. All comments should be directed to the board. We will now move on to our first agenda item. Please join me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. First, we have our consent agenda. Are there any comments regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Up next, we have, we need to add two items to the agenda, the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation and a Penn State Agricultural Environmental Center.
These are time-sensitive letters of support that need to go with grant applications to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation before the end of the month.
Any discussion in reference to adding them to the agenda tonight? Pretty routine. Is there a motion to approve adding the request for support letters for the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation and the Penn State Agricultural Environmental Center to the agenda? Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Workinglands contract agreement granted, adminis-, excuse me, grant administration?
So the Workinglands project is on the Mann property, which is essentially behind the proposed Sheets on Florrie Mill. It's going around the bend there into Mannham Township and East Pete. The township agreed early on to support and to provide them with grant administration as they filed for grant applications. They were awarded a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant in the amount of $499,000 and some odd cents. So there's, this is the agreement, contract agreement with them, stipulates their duties, our duties, and indemnifies us in this whole process. This was reviewed by our attorney. I also reached out to the grant administrator at National Fish, and everything seems to be aboard, or everybody's on board. We did have some minor amendments from the solicitor, which were introduced and are listed on your agenda as the second attachment there, amendments approved by solicitor. They're fairly minor in nature. She did request a higher level of insurance, and they agreed to increase that to $2 million. She also changed some of the wording in terms of the indemnification to make sure we were fully covered. And she's supportive of it and moved forward and signed the agreement, authorized the signature.
Does this, I guess, any MS4 credits? Would, as they do these type of projects, or?
We haven't talked about MS4 credits. I mean, it certainly would be eligible for them. It's a stream bank restoration and trail.
We should be getting credits for that and just putting it in our bank at this point. So, I mean, especially the tax dollars going to it, might as well kill two birds with one stone.
Now, the grant does have provisions in it. I think it's $18,000 for administration of that grant. So that will come back to us.
Mr. Russell, do you have a microphone?
What's that?
Do you have a microphone? Okay.
I'm not talking right now.
I'm not picking it up, okay.
Yeah. So do they, is this stream bank restoration, stabilization, repairing buffers? What are they doing?
I think it's a combination of all three.
Okay.
And they're also adding some fish access, some access to the fishing in the creek.
Okay, like a dock area or?
Not a dock, it's just access points.
Okay.
Yeah.
Please sit back, you're both.
Right now, it's pretty grown up over, and there's really no access to the stream at this point.
Well, if we can get, find out what the credits are gonna be for this, and we should
Yep.
bank it and record it and document it and add to our MS4 program so we apply it to our next permit cycle.
Because of previous knowledge on this, I'd say about a year ago is why I approached the Sheets project there on, it's not Rorstedown Road, that's, yes, Petersburg Road, I guess is correct. But anyway, this, that's the next leg of this, and it would seem to me to make a whole lot of sense to have this work continuing with the parties in place. And fish and wildlife might respond to the logic of that. And I'm not sure if we should take that initiative or how that could happen, but I believe it would be appropriate.
I think after the conversation that, about a year ago, Mr. Maiden did reach out to Sheets, and that was very early on in their project, and they didn't really respond to him.
They didn't respond very well either with their project here. Maybe they need Big Brother to help somehow here to encourage, to encourage them.
I'm not following this, the conversation, so bring me up to speed.
So, I don't know, Diane, if you can pull from our history banks there, the map of the project, which would be in MS4 planning,
Stops.
Planning, then MS4 group.
That little leg could be.
And then the Mann project, there should be a map in there. And the Sheets is right in front of where they make the bend, because that's the Mann property behind it.
Good.
And there was discussion early on when Sheets was designing that they should talk to the people on the project, Workinglands, to see if Workinglands could do something back there as well.
Okay.
But we could ask them to reach out again.
Can we pull that up on Google Earth or something, or?
She's working on the, there's one that has a map of it, but you could just pull it up in Google Earth too, that's easier.
So it's, it's Sheets, the corporation, and not the developer that would be responsible for making that decision? Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I don't know who holds the lease. I don't know that Sheets actually owns it. So it would be the property owner. And that might be the sticking point.
Yeah. So, and so we're requesting, right, that, that they continue that short leg? Is that?
It would, it would go under Florrie Mill.
Okay.
I don't know if there's a box cover there or what it is.
If I, if I could ask one question, and maybe I'm a little dense on this, but who benefits from this project?
Well, the township, I guess, and.
Township through the MS4 credits. With, on the three municipalities, we have probably the majority of it.
But if we don't get MS4 credits on a project like this, spend a half a million dollars.
So Workinglands apply for the grant. They are going to hire the contractors to do the work. So there's some administrative oversight that they're having on this, and that's where they kind of make their money. The Mann family, who owns the property, they have put up their land as collateral for this $499,000 that was granted. And their buy-in to this is simply having access. I mean, there's no real, they see the environmental impact and the necessity and the favorable accesses to the public. But there's really no one that makes any money. It's almost like the, the Steiman Foundation project, the Blue Green Corridor. It's no one making any money. It's just for the betterment of the Little Conestoga.
So what's the, what's the limits of the work for us, then?
Basically, that green and.
Seven forty-one to seventy-two, that whole area, or?
Let me see if I can find the, there's a map.
So I guess for me, I'd like to be clear on what we're asking them to do and understand what the costs are, or fully understand, you know, if it's just a matter of them continuing the project down, and there's grant money to be used with it, I, I don't see why they would say no. Is there something I'm missing that there's some hidden cost to them or some hurdle?
Who's them?
Sheets or the developer? If that's what we're talking about.
Well, there would be costs to Sheets, and, and they have to go in to do it, because it's outside of the scope of this project.
But isn't this Sheets aside? Where Sheets is a, Mr. LeFever's comment concerning Sheets is a separate issue, correct?
Correct.
I mean, I don't have an objection to this. I just like to understand it a little better, maybe than, than I, I have it, or than I am at this point.
Where are Sheets in this picture right now? I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting myself all turned around right now.
So this is the off-ramp to Rorstedown Road. Sheets does not currently exist.
Right.
Buttonwood Drive goes away, and these two properties become Sheets. And it borders on this portion of the creek right here.
Okay. So I think actually Mr. Bennett's comment clarified it for me. So we have what's before us tonight, which is separate from what Mr. LeFever's comment is, and I got those, that conflated, that, that that was part of this.
Yes.
So I guess let's deal with what's before us tonight, and then we can talk about what Mr. LeFever's comment was. Are there any other questions about that, what was just explained to us?
Is there a contractor selected at this point or not yet?
Not yet, no.
They haven't put out the bid yet? Or are, are they bidding? I mean, technically, it's foundation work.
Right, it's foundation work, so they don't really have to bid it, but of course, they want the best deal they can get.
Or do we have to bid because we're the, we're the ones administering as, as local government?
We do not. Susan, Mrs. Piper looked at that. She said she's comfortable with it, with the contract and the term service provider.
So they can just solicit bids? They don't have to do a public advertising and waste money doing all that stuff?
Correct.
Okay.
And township is just overseeing that this is done properly?
The township is overseeing the administration of the grant, not the work.
Not the work, okay.
Paperwork.
And there's, and there's no financial cost to township on this?
There is $18,000 built in for our time.
We get reimbursed.
Into the grant.
We're gonna get reimbursed, and that's perfect. But, but I'm just saying.
No, there's no cost.
Nothing going the other way.
No.
Okay.
No. I'm, I'm rather shocked that they got $499,000, and they're still looking for more. This is not gonna finish the project.
Right now, there's, there's a lot of ARPA money going into this environmental stuff, so we might as well just get it. So there, there's gonna be other, other environmental projects we can dump it into too.
Yeah, so would you be approving is to authorize signature on the contract and the grant agreement? And you don't need anything contingent on the solicitor, because she's already commented today.
Gotcha.
They made her changes, which they accepted.
All right. Any other comments or questions on this? Any questions on the contract agreement from audience or Zoom? Okay. Is there a motion to authorize entering into a contract with Workinglands for National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Grand Administration contingent on the township? I guess we can strike that. Let me rephrase that. Is there a motion to authorize entering into a contract with Workinglands for National Fish and Wildlife Foundation Grand Administration?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Mr. LeFever's request or discussion point, is there something that we need to do with that? Is there action that we?
The Sheets project has been approved and is ready for construction. There's really nothing that we can force them to do at this point other than to let them know that the Workinglands is moving forward on their project and that perhaps they could reach out to them.
Okay.
Which I will do.
And essentially, now that I, I feel like I fully understand, they would not be part of this grant, and we're essentially basically asking them to bear the burden of cleaning it up, which is probably not something they're gonna wanna do.
Probably not.
What's the condition in that area of the stream? Is there trash, anything like that, that a property owner would be responsible for beyond all that MS4 stuff?
I couldn't tell you. I don't know if Perry would be familiar with the area, what that section looks like just off the bridge, behind the, what would be the Sheets. It's probably overgrown considerably.
It's a pretty steep grade. There's a lot of bank washout through there, because that's where flooding occurs. I don't know that you could even easily visualize or get close to, to see.
My point simply is that we've had very positive results for the township at Lime Springs and at the hospital project to deal with legacy silt and move environmentally forward. So I think anything we can do to get parties involved in that direction is appropriate.
And this, and moving in that direction would connect this project to the Blue Green Corridor. And I do know that Mr. Maiden has reached out to the Blue Green, Mr. Schultz, in an effort to maybe work on that connection in between.
Okay.
Maybe, can we make one suggestion? Because I'm not all, I'm not for forcing a business to do anything. But if it's only a tiny little stretch, and there's a grant project, and we have a working group and everything, a lot of times when you talk to the grant agencies and say, we can do this additional stretch if you will provide additional grant monies, and right now, the monies are there, and we could possibly get this as a total project. But I don't need support if, I don't support making Sheets try and do environmental permitting. That's a, that's a nightmare for a company to have to jump into that. But you got a group that experienced with this. And if, if Sheets skin the game is only to say yes, you could do it on our property, maybe there's, there could be a win there for that.
And that was the, the status of his original request to Sheets, but they may not have been ready at that point.
Right.
To talk.
I would support at least reaching out to see if they'd be interested in being party to it, but not making them have to dump hundreds of thousands of dollars into it.
There's nothing to make them, yeah.
Okay.
Understood.
I, yeah, I like that approach. I think that's, that's a good path forward. Up next, we have the workman's compensation dividend distribution.
So this is something we have been doing for the past at least five years. We get an annual dividend from our trust, the Siskiyouhanna Municipal Trust, which handles our workers' compensation coverage. This year was a record-high dividend check of $55,000. This represents several years back of settled claims, and now they kind of cleared their balance sheets. This went to the Admin Finance Group for consideration. Their recommendation is a check to full-time employees for $400, which would be essentially, excuse me, about half of what you're, the $55,000.
And what, and just to refresh her, what did we give last year?
Three hundred.
So it's kind of corresponding to what we did before.
Yes. And that check was just shy of $30,000.
Any questions or comments on that? Any questions or comments from the audience or Zoom on that? Hearing none. Is there a motion to disburse a portion of the $55,557 dividend checked to all full-time employees in the amount of $400?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. LeFever. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have the two items that we added to the agenda, the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation request for support.
So the, the Little Conestoga Creek Foundation is the Steiman Project, the Blue Green Corridor. This section that they are going after some dollars for is behind Wickersham Bar?
Bar Holly.
Bar Holly, thank you. And the apartments that are in there, the other side is F and M College, but that is kind of a sticking point to get across the rail line at that area. So this would be the focus of what that grant request is being given. And Mr. Schultz did indicate that the property owners on Bar Holly are very supportive of this happening, which is why they're granting access, which is the, the green highlight.
Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions from Zoom? Hearing none, is there a motion to authorize the township manager to issue a letter of support for the foundation grant submission to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Russell, is there a second? Second by Mr. LeFever. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Penn State Agricultural and Environmental Center?
Same situation, letter of support to the National Fish and Wildlife. This is with the Penn State Ag. They do currently have a very active program, and Chickies, they call it, I think Chickies re-envisioned, but they're now kind of branching out and wanna include the Little Conestoga in this funding mechanism. They're also going up the other way to Dolphin, but this would all, for us, it would encompass the Little Conestoga. Which might make that connection that you're hopeful for and extend it even further.
The LeFever connection.
The LeFever connection.
Are there any questions or comments?
What's, what's, I mean, I was involved with the other discussions in the past. What's, what's with this expanded role? What exactly are they gonna be doing?
They're gonna take their successful programs. I mean, they, they struggled with the last one when they first got the money. I think they've learned a lot, the Penn State Ag. But they're, they called boots on the ground, where they concentrate on farmers and actually go out and talk to them and initiates better management of their land.
So is it gonna be taking farms above baseline at this point?
I couldn't answer that. The, the data, the information they gave us was very vague, which is kind of scary because of their history. But there, the concept makes sense that they're expanding to the Little Conestoga. Yeah, and they're using their successful programs, so that's all I can tell you.
Maybe it'd be a good, good manager report item down the road to get, file a little more about what they're actually up to at this point. Yeah, because I would, I would say they kind of swung for fences and missed the first time.
Yeah, they did. I think they regrouped, though. I mean, yeah, they, they were, you saw the matrix as much as I did, I'm sure, with lines everywhere.
Like I said, I participated with the West Hemphill and Penn Township and Mannheim Borough and all that dealing in the past with that stuff, so.
Yeah, I think Marquis Stur speaks very highly of him because of the farmers that he's, they've dealt with. So I think they're on the right path. Yes, I will, I will reach out and see what the details are.
Because it could be something, if it's something that involves our farmers, we can promote it too, if it's something that we, we kind of agree up with, so.
Yep.
I, I do note that there's, in the title of the project, there is a faith-based stewardship referenced. I just wonder how that fits into the picture.
A good question. I think it was in their last proposal. I can't answer it totally, because I'm not fully involved with that group.
They, they reach out to the old order a lot that won't deal with the Conservation District, because Conservation District's a government entity. So it's kind of like Farmland Trust versus the county for, for, I preserve the same thing. They, so they, that faith-based initiative is actually reaching out to the Amish and the Manay and the Brethren and trying to get their farms and having a better understanding of how their religious practices go into the farming, so.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any from Zoom? Okay. Is there a motion to authorize the township manager to issue a letter of support for the center's grant submission to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation? A motion for Mr. LeFever, second for Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Old businesses, is there anything that you wanted to discuss under budget?
Yeah, we're scheduled for adoption consideration at the next meeting.
Any other comments or references to the budget?
I see Mr. Robinson is with us. Since he's joined us, maybe he has something to comment.
Use my backup if there's a question.
He's, he's basically saying two more means and I retire.
I just muted him again.
Maybe he dozed off.
Can anybody hear me?
No.
All right. Yeah, I think the twenty twenty-three budget is a very good financial plan for the township. I think next year, the township can continue to provide all the core services that our residents anticipate. And I think at the same time, you have adequate funding to start to tackle major infrastructure projects as well as some park projects. So I think we're in good shape.
I think on behalf of the board, we should show our appreciation to Mr. Robinson for his help in transition of his position to Mrs. Johnson, I believe is the name, Jenna. Thank you, Joe.
Yep, thank you. You, and I think Gina's been here almost a year and a half. And I think this whole transition has worked well. I think you, you're not going to miss a beat going into the new deal.
I have to say that Joe is a very good teacher.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mrs. Switzer, just along budget items, I do believe we got a question earlier this week in reference to, and maybe we just want to highlight that now funding for the Centerville Road widening to what our share is and how we're paying for it.
Oh, okay, yes. So the current construction number is about three point eight million. And we are using our American Rescue Plan monies, which is amounts to about two point four. The remainder will be coming out of our capital reserve account to cover the difference. So the project is for three years and we have prorated our expenditures across those three years and we feel confident that we will be able to handle that project moving forward.
So it, when the question came in, it just made me along the lines of, as we were thanking Mr. Robinson, I just, I think Mr. Robinson and the staff has done a good job. And I just wanted to echo that, that as we move forward, that we were prepared for this. And it's a good sign of the fiscal stability of the township. Okay, any new business? Let's see, here we have Lifeline reporting for October.
Yes, I guess a quarterly report we get?
No, we get it monthly.
Monthly?
We receive it monthly. They shortly before Susquehanna Valley EMS dissolved into Penn State Health, they started sending us monthly reports. Sometimes there's interesting numbers on them, sometimes they're status quo. So typically I pull out the ones that have something a little more that might be of interest to you, but we always have them available. So it's just for your reference.
Good. So Diane, for everybody's benefit, because I know what this is saying, but what's, what is the desired response time for EMS? In suburban municipality?
Less than what it is on this report.
But what, what is the desired time?
There, there isn't a set desired time. We don't have a standard. But I mean, obviously the preferences are well, not as short as we can get it because we don't want them driving dangerously, but typically somewhere between five and eight minutes. If, if we have localized resources. It grows from there depending on how many units are in service at a time and so on. We're very lucky in this area to have as many EMS units as we have. When you go to the more rural areas, you're looking at thirty to forty-five minute response times. But they have grown significantly since probably three years ago or so. However, Lifeline is doing a great job at providing EMS education. They have another EMT class that'll be finishing up shortly of importance, just in general, they, they have an agreement with West Hamfield Township to have an ambulance in their firehouse. They were not able to staff that ambulance for a significant period of time. And so the truck that is at Woodcrest was covering a portion of West Hamfield Township as well as the Mount Joy truck and the Columbia truck. They have now had that ambulance in service for several months continuously. So it adds significantly to the resources in the system for our, for our residents.
We did have a traffic commission this evening prior to our board meeting. Some of the highlights, we did approve for speed limit signs to be placed on Windermere. And that will allow for speed enforcement on that road. We had information given to us in reference to two traffic studies based on speeding complaints. And again, it, it appeared that that data is not, not borne out with those studies, that these are enforceable areas or that we need to take further action. We did also discuss the truck route study that we will hopefully be getting information by the end of the year on that. And we discussed and made a recommendation, I think probably we should revisit it and talk about a little bit here in reference to purchasing speed limit display signs that as a deterrent or an awareness to make drivers aware of how fast they're going. The signs display the speed underneath the speed limit sign, and we're looking to do that on Spring Valley Road before we go to the next level of any kind of traffic coming there. I think our discussion was based on which type of those signs we should be purchasing. And maybe we could hear a little more from staff on that as far as, there's two different types, one.
Right, so, so we did get quotes, two different types. They're both solar powered. The one will collect data, the other does not. The one that does not is just over seven thousand. The one that collects data is just over ten. There's a question if the data will have any use to us by collecting it, since these are probably going to be sitting at a location for several months. What's the value of collecting that data? What will we use it for? And I think Chief Brubaker has mentioned that we probably won't use that data, so therefore why spend the three thousand dollars?
Is this a permit or is this a portable?
According to Perry, they are portable. I mean, you can move them around.
That's.
Yeah, they would be, they would be moved around the township.
It's like our temporary speed humps. They can be moved to prom areas as we need to have them.
Yes, yes.
I think our hope is that these two are going to be permanently on Spring Valley Road. On a section of Spring Valley Road that we do believe is a problem. And I think we want to take this step before we take a look at speed humps or anything else along those lines on that road.
That's what I'm getting. They could, but they can get moved. If we decide that we don't need them or something, or the guy goes some other place, we got the ability to move. They're not, it's not permanent.
No. And the only, only drawback to placing them on, we do have some on Spring Valley, do we not?
We do have ones on Spring Valley right now. We have one at Dorsey and one down by Sylvan.
And we have to place those in a certain spot because they are solar and it is covered.
Correct.
But this would be two more to be put someplace else that are a problem area.
What I would recommend we do do though is you put some, if you do, if the traffic commission moves forward and puts the permanent sign up, the portable permanent sign up, I would take our other sign, turn on, turn it off and, and get like a week or two weeks worth of data. And then a couple of months later, go back and put it up again and see whether I think what might start occurring after a while is people ignore the sign after a while. So I don't mean to burst everybody's bubble, but if you do a couple of things, you'll be able to see whether, so you do a study, you do a study before you put the sign up, then you do one right as it goes up, kind of like a week after it goes up. And then a couple of months down the road, see if it dropped, and then if that drop stays in place or whether it goes back up again.
So we do have a recent study for Spring Valley.
No, I know, but this is, this is kind of like we did with speed humps. You follow up by analyzing how effective the tool actually is. And we go with the cheaper one, the seven thousand dollar one. We're not going to collect the data to see whether it's a benefit, but we do have the portable speed sign that you can put, turn off radar, just have it on radar mode, no flash. You could put it near to this other side and just see task traffic slowed down like we did in farm task. Traffic slowed down like the speed humps slowed traffic down by about ten, twelve miles per hour. It was a pretty significant slowdown. You might find, okay, hey, these signs actually work. They slowed traffic now on average by five miles per hour. And the three-month layer study found out, hey, they, they're still being effective. So it's just, it's just kind of backing it up because it's just, it's a good tool. If people come back and say stuff's not effective, well, we can show it is, or, or maybe we agree with them, it is ineffective, so. So it's just, just a suggestion for the traffic commission to think about.
Go with the cheaper sign. It doesn't record the data. There is a workaround that we could always add an additional sign if we want that data. So I guess the question is, is continuous information of any use? I mean, we were talking before the meeting, it's what we have now gives you a snapshot of one week and that's, that's all you know. So the question would be is, is having like seven months of continuous information, would that give us anything that we didn't know otherwise? And to me, it seems like it might be worth the extra three thousand to have that, but just my opinion.
I'm not married to either one. I'll defer to the rest of the board on it.
I mean, the, the ten thousand dollar one would give you the extra bonus of having versatility if you don't. The ones we have now do collect data.
They do not. We, the police department set does. We have one set that collects data. And then Perry has a, a device that collects data as well.
Which ones are sitting out on Spring Valley?
Those are not, I, I don't believe they're data collecting. They're sold, they're just the solar ones that are Perry's, but those are different even than the Jamar device that we put out. It's like the Otter Box looking thing that Perry's guys put out that we do the speed studies with.
Yeah, the two that are currently deployed there on Spring Valley Road, they do not collect data. They are simply a radar device that, that tells you your speed. And we can program it according to what the speed limit is to make it flash or do whatever you need it to do. Again, if you buy the cheaper ones, we can always put our little black box on the post that that thing is mounted on and collect any data you want. And we can do more than just a week. With those black cats, we can swap out the batteries and do, you know, as, as long as you would like on a road. But either way, it, it's up to you guys.
Well, it seems to me like the more expensive, the ten, the one for ten thousand is more versatile. And it gives you the ability to do both either short-term or, or a longer term terms of data and information. Correct?
Correct. It would be a stronger tool for your toolbox.
Well, I, I mean, I think I'd be in favor of that.
Okay. Well, and that was the recommendation of the traffic commission to the board. I think we need board approval to authorize the purchase. Is that correct? And that needs to be the form of a motion. So to continue forward, is there a motion to accept the traffic commission's recommendation? Purchase the two units that were just over ten thousand dollars for Spring Valley Road. Okay, so motion from Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, public comment. Is there any public comment from anyone on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, managers report, board group report.
So I'm happy to report that Centerville Road has officially started, as you all are aware.
Yeah.
They started the work on the Route Thirty area. I think they're done for a while. They'll, they'll probably start mobilizing and bringing things in. We had a good meeting to introduce the project on Tuesday morning. I did have my, our first board of you hearing today on one of the properties at Hempland and Centerville. That's one that we did certify and settle the right away, but there are probably five or six properties that still have outstanding issues with our offer. And that was one of them. So that went to a board review and appraisals were reviewed. And so they have thirty or sixty days to get back to us in terms of what their decision is. At this point, they have not touched Centerville Road. It's just the Penn Dot area. So we'll see how that project moves along. We are pretty confident in working with our, the Penn Dot representatives because we work with them on state roads. So Diane is in contact with them constantly. This Church Street waterline. Diane might have an update, but things are moving along there, but they are requiring us to, they are required to close the road.
So the current project is from Church Street down to Herrendale. That project should wrap up either Monday or Tuesday. And then they informed us just yesterday that there is a second portion of the project for four service installations in the seven hundred block of Church Street, which is between Bowman Road and Nolt Road. And so for one day, they will close that portion of the roadway. And Perry and I both have informed them that the detour that's in place for the northern portion of Church Street is not appropriate for that portion of Church Street and that they'll have to realign their signs showing Nolton Nestle to Bowman for that detour rather than stony battery to get around one block that has an obvious other suitable detour. So we are in contact with them on that. I did also ask them if there's, if the services are all on the same side of the road, if they couldn't do a single lane closure with flagging instead of closing the road. The school district has concerns. But Perry did indicate from his conversation with the supervisor on site that it is in their contract, it is approved, and that they simply just didn't communicate that to us from the start. So we'll keep working with them on that and get that information out as soon as we know what one day that's going to be.
So Church Street paving, again, that's a project in the future. It'll be sometime in twenty-three. Don't know much else about that one other than the fact that the, the contract has been led by Penn Dot.
Summer of twenty-three.
Excuse me?
Summer of twenty-three.
Hopefully that's in their contract. Hopefully we've made that point clear. No, it's not.
Not in the contract.
It's not in the contract.
I thought we were going to reach out and.
And, and they did. They just have, have not heard back.
No.
Yeah.
Can we follow up on that?
Sure.
The meetings that have to be held to do the scheduling haven't occurred yet. And so what we're waiting on at this point.
Right, I know JVI very well. So if you need any conversations, Ms. Switzer, just let me know. I know the president and Steve Baumberger is probably the superintendent.
The conversation in the meeting that we had for that project was the paving timing. There's when they looked at the timeline, they have when there's not school in session. There's not enough days in a row for the projects that have to occur during the road closure to get the project done and the paving done without extending it to a second year.
Understand it might not all be able to happen over the closure or when school's out, but if the majority of it could happen over that time period. Would just be a big, I think it would be easier for them, obviously, as well. Be a big relief for everyone.
Old Worristown Road project. I have to admit, Diane and I are a part of the email chain back and forth between the contractor, the Penn Dot representative and the design firm. And it appears to us that there's a lot of struggling going on, a lot of. And it appears to us that there's a lot of struggling going on, a lot of finger pointing at this point, and we have to get to the bottom of it and get this project moving forward. We're trying. Farmingdale Road. I don't have anything to update on that other than what I have written. They're still reviewing the shop drawings. The mast arms and the project schedule have really have not been put forth to us.
I've got a question on that. When was the contract let on that project? Was that September?
No, I think it was August.
October, I think, wasn't it?
Was it October?
Yeah.
I thought it was, actually, actually, I thought it was September and I, my, my only comment is it just seemed like if you've had a project for thirty or sixty days. It should be moving along a little faster than it appears to be now. Again, I don't know, I'm not the expert here. Defer to Mr. Russell, I guess. But just in general, I would, you know, hope this project could move along a little faster than it is. I mean, we, there's really been no doubt what we're gonna do here for years. And just hopeful that it can move along faster. Thank you.
I think you have to keep in mind too, the time of year. And in the winter months. Yes, they could, they could be doing, I think they're doing a lot of paperwork. A lot of the the shop drawing work to prep for the beginning of spring.
The key point is what you have right there, the shop drawings for the mast arms. So nine month wait for that stuff. So that needs to be kind of like the critical path right now. Because it takes a long time for those to come in with these supply issues right now. So I would, I would back to JVI, ask them about what their long lead times are and when they're expecting materials to come in. Because that's what's delaying every transportation project right now.
Everybody's busy and nobody can find workers, I guess, too. But yes, it is taking forever, it seems like, but nature of the beast.
There are seventy-two in the Lititz Road intersection, too. It's the same situation. We thought that project would be up and installed by now, but it's not. Part of that is the Penn dot signal permit and the requirement to have another study done regarding no turn on red. Which has been submitted, so I'm moving forward there too. But again, snail's pace. We talked about the truck study at the traffic commission. Hopefully, we'll have a study completed by the year end. I did share with West Hemfield the quote for the Broad Street addition to that project. Stony Battery Trail, essentially, the middle is done. The KRM side, the Nolt roadside, that's under contract for KM, KRM to complete. The other side's getting a bit more involved from Stony to Kaufman. That's where we're closing that little shortcut. We thought we could just close it and be done, give the property owner on West Hemfield his portion. And we would keep the other side for the trail. Our attorney has said that, no, you have to vacate. So our right of way is for a road and it's not going to be used for a road. We have to vacate it. So half goes to one property, half goes to the other property owner. So we have to communicate that and that's probably going to take some agreements. Because he's gonna have a trail on his part of the property. And so he's gonna have to have that discussed. Plus, it just, it needs to have another bit of survey work done because of the Kaufman.
Do we actually need to do that step or do we just? We control the railway, we make one, make it one way and we section off a section for a trail and I mean, do we need to actually go through a step if it's becoming difficult to vacate and just asking?
We were headed down the road to divide it and West Hemfield will just turn theirs into grass. Our side would be a trail. I guess we could make it one way.
Make it one way and put something, maybe even mill up a little section, get a little grass in between called Nun. Just, yeah. If especially if it's becoming an issue of how to get rid of the road at this point.
I like that idea. I think it would go quicker, be less headaches.
I'm all for that. We'll have a conversation.
Yeah, I can have a talk with off. But yeah, it's something to make it simpler.
Yeah.
How about the area in front of the storage units?
I have to talk to Scott Hain about that, where we stand with that, because that's the other link.
It's already being used. There's actually a lot of people on that trail already with, even though parts of us are just stoned up.
Right.
Because I'm amazed at how many people are actually already walking on it.
And it's just one of those situations thought of the easy, but it's taking time. McFarland Drive, that basin work, you had asked me to do some more detailed conversation about that and I provide that to you in my report. I gave you a copy of the business letters that were sent out and our plan of attack come spring regarding the business owners and the property owners involved. Meetings will be held. So far, we've done one cutting and one herbicide application and more will follow next year. At which point then we'll turn it over to the business owners for their maintenance. The problem with the outlet is we're trying, we're waiting for a rain event to happen to see how well it functions. If it doesn't function well, then we have a sediment problem and have to address that. We're hoping it functions, so.
Do we have happy neighbors on McFarland, early seeing progress at this point? I haven't seen any emails lately, so I'm assuming that's good.
At some point, they're not going to be happy with us because they want us to touch the stream. And that's where we have to have a meeting and get them in front of us and explain why we're not doing that.
Have to take steps. So we analyze to see if if the lower end needs to have the sediment removed and what that is and we are doing the project on AHR Park too. So I mean, all those are gonna, the chemistry should be improving things for everybody there.
Yes. We did talk about the Manstream Restoration Project, so it's bringing, taking care of campus fence. We have at least three more panels to put in, but the chain link has been installed. Talked about the Susquehanna Municipal Trust, check. Personnel, Stephen Skiles, the former chief, has been hired as the HR generalist. He is starting tomorrow. And Rebecca Olmer Fieser has been hired as the new accounting clerk. Her first day was on Tuesday. So we are still shy, one public works person, but other than that, we're fully staffed. Just some details there about the traffic commission, which we were discussed at the traffic commission. Public Safety Working Group met on the ninth, reviewed police activities. Their community events. How to cancel the remainder of the Fire Services Commission meetings, which has been taken care of through emails. And also creating a five oh one C three entity with the fire companies. Which is will serve to provide us with a vehicle to hire a part-time staff, drivers. Not us, the fire companies through the five oh one C three that that the Worristown Fire Company has been willing to create. That's still kind of on the drawing board, hasn't been really finalized yet. Right now, M T
F R.
F R is providing us with drivers, but they are becoming very spotty in what they can give to us. So that could be get worse or it could get better, but if it gets worse, we need a plan B. Also talked about creating a deputy sixty-eight volunteer position. I don't know if you want to explain that or if John wants to explain it. He was on.
He is on, he's on the phone. He has some things with his kids this evening. I can go. And then if you have questions, I can answer.
It's really something that that it's really, and again, on the drawing board, a thought process that we do have John. He is becoming stretched then in certain times. And potentially a volunteer person to supplement him. And his services might be the best approach for Hemphill Fire down the road.
A backup.
Backup, yeah.
We have none right now.
Yeah. Staff had an MS four meeting with the DMA to review the program. And I do have the AHR Wetlands, that's the one that needs to be completed by May of twenty-three. And they're working through the design process. The Nestle Road basins. Again, design work is happening there. Four Seasons and the Hark Stream Bank Restorations, we're still looking for grant funding for that. There's some possibilities out there. Dorsey Road. That's turning into kind of a, not a major project, but a bigger project than we had anticipated. That drainage line is going to need some design work. That's between two properties and it drops off in the back. And of course, there's no easements, no one owns it, but it is taking our water off our roads. So more to come on that one. And then the Harrisburg paint drainage ditch. We do need to do additional survey work during the winter months to determine how far we're going to go with that project.
We, are we in general terms having any issues without naming names of any properties being willing to participate in that or?
The Harrisburg Pike?
Yes, or is it amicable now at this point?
The one property owner on the upper section of it has asked us to look at it, which is why we're looking at that. We have easements, everything for the below section that we actually own. But of course, you can't do anything below until you address something above.
Everything's amicable at this point?
Yes, as far as I know. It's been a while since we reached out and and they probably think what we're doing, but process. And that's all I have in my report unless there's questions.
I have none. Any questions from anyone else? Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, it is eight oh one and we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.